Okay, uh, this is Tuesday, July fifteen. We have a quorum. We have an extra quorum. We have a surplus. So who would like to stand in tonight? Jennifer, Dick? We could stand, Dick could stand in and then if you have to leave early, Dick, then Jennifer can do it. So Dick will have the full voting powers during the course of the conversation. I did not see, can I, right, she was gonna try to-
She was gonna try to to log in.
So we're okay then at this point. So seeing that we have a quorum, is there a motion to open the building, uh, the building? The meeting?
Motion?
The building is open.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So our first matter is a continued, or is it a continued or first public hearing?
First public.
First public hearing for Nardozzi LLC. This is the T Square Property, sixty-four Bedford Road, four eleven King Street. This is an application for a site development plan approval for installation of a monument sign, a Hyland post sign. And we're down to one sign?
No.
Down to one sign.
Oh, this is continued.
Sorry, this is continued.
Okay.
Yeah, so continuation of the new-
I thought we did, we tried to do the one and done, but-
Yeah, yeah.
Some people just wanna have two signs, so you know.
Good evening, uh, I'm script wouldn't work, I think grabbing us again. Um, we have changed our plans down to one sign, the monument sign at the top of the hill. As discussed last week, we've removed the other sign at the exit. Uh, I don't know what else we can go forward with.
I had one question for you, um, I know the stamps got kind of, um, there's a little rock area, uh, some, it looks like a little carving or something there, or does that could be impacted? It looked like it was downstowed from or even from the sign.
No, nothing should be impacted, nothing will be impacted from what we have going on.
Okay. Okay, great. So we have a question.
Okay, sure.
Yes, um, does our code permit this sign to be illuminated? Does our code permit a monument sign to be uplift, to be illuminated?
Say it again? Illuminated?
Yeah.
Um, thank you.
Like ground lit up to wash it so you could see it?
There, there are regulations regarding the lighting in conversations with the building inspector. This, this code is, or this sign is conforming.
Okay, no, I know it's conforming, then the applicant has not wanted to put lighting on it, so I just wanna make-
Yeah, I think that there are regulations regarding lightning, lighting. I am not sure what they are.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that you're not coming in with lighting, so when the sign goes up, if somebody decides in the middle of construction to light it, that you guys come back here to get permission to light it. Because I think you may want to light it.
Uh, we have not gotten to that part, we've just-
Solar lighting, I don't know if we need permission for solar lighting, so-
You, they, they would, you would submit whatever details were, if it's solar lighting, you would submit that with your building permit application and the building inspector will ensure that that lighting is consistent, compliant with the code.
With lumens and stuff.
Correct, so-
And does that come back to us, or, or ta-
Well, the question is, right now, right now, your board does maintain control over site lighting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you wish to allow the building inspector to make that determination, um, you can defer that to him, otherwise it would come back to you.
Okay.
Well, I'll defer that to you.
As long as you don't start talking about the sceptic, I don't know.
There is one thing, that the lights would be directed at the sign so we could see them, so it wouldn't be directed at public, but yeah.
Yes, right.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what we think, exactly, I think that's what we-
That's where I was going.
So if, I mean, um, but that is something we've kind of discussed, I don't, uh, will that be, uh, and then there was one more thing. Because we went down to one sign, we spoke to the building department, they said that we're allowed to have a twenty-foot square sign in this space.
Yeah.
This sign comes in at sixteen, as we discussed before. So, um, would, would asking to be a twenty-foot sign something that I need to bring before the board to you today, or something that we should discuss with the, uh?
I think it's really building department, isn't it?
It's a building department call, and what I would say is depending on the size of your sign, you'd have to look at site distances and make sure it's not interfering with anything.
Right.
Um, but the building inspector would make that determination.
Right.
Um, and give you, you know, is, he will review whether or not it's consistent with the code requirements.
Okay.
I think you're putting the sign way up there at the top with fences, right? So it's, I don't think it's gonna interfere with any sight lines whatsoever.
Yeah. No, I, I don't, well, it would be your call, but, but, um-
Well, well.
It's way up there, yeah, so that's where it is, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's either a foot either or, sixteen, it's four by four, so it's either five by four or four by five.
Right, it's not, it's not gonna-
It's not a lot more, but I mean, we're-
It's not a millboard.
Not a millboard.
If we're, yeah, if we're allowed, you know, or a little bit more, we would ask that we could use it. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think, this board isn't going to approve the actual dimension of the sign. Um, you know, it's, it's on the plans, we've asked for more detailed plans to be submitted, to submit, submitted for signature. If you change it to be in conformance with the code, at that point in time, the, the, the board has the authority to say that's okay.
Yeah, good, okay. So, bring in any other questions or issues?
I don't have any other questions. We've conditioned, um, all of the comments as a conditions of the resolution.
Right, right. And Jeff, I think you're okay with it? No comments from you, from the engineering side?
Correct, I just, I added, uh, in order to condition that it will be just really the contract, uh, and on the, the resolution.
Okay, great. Okay, uh, any comments from the public on this, this application? Any comments from board members on this, uh, application?
Only if they do come back for lighting, and if the building inspector is the one who reviews it, can we make sure we stay at the right lumens? So we don't get something that's too bright and white that we're trying to avoid?
Right.
Can we condition that, that it stays at twenty-seven hundred?
Yeah, you can include that as a condition.
Okay. Okay, that's all I would have.
Would that be acceptable?
But any future lighting is within-
Is that acceptable?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's all I would have.
Right.
Okay.
All right, twenty-one hundred, two hundred. Yeah.
How would the lighting, it would be upline, or would be down, downed it from the top?
I, it would, I would presume we would shoot for something to be staked into the ground and just facing right back at the sign.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nothing too intrusive, but just at least something to kind of, you know, there is a lot of, you know, the stoplights and the, you know, you know, the street lights are right there, but something to kind of give it, make sure it's not in the shadow.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the key, so it's not in the shadow.
Right. Okay, all right, not seeing any comments. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a resolution before us, uh, so with, uh, we're gonna have that one amendment about the lighting and the, and, and the amount of the point of lighting. Um, any other questions or comments on the proposed, the resolution from board members? Okay, you're, you're okay with it? Thank you so much. Are, were you okay with it? No problems, yes, okay.
Um, do we need to- Do we need to make any amendments as it relates to, it's referencing this plan that says it's a forty-eight by forty-eight?
I don't think so, as long as it complies with code, we don't-
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah. There will be another plan that he will submit that will be the one that the chairman signs.
Okay. Got it.
Because if it's not code compliant, you're not getting a permit.
I think they have to go to ARB too, don't they?
Yeah.
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 When they apply for a building permit, they'll go to the ARB.
Yep. Okay, so with Greg's, uh, amendment regarding the, uh, the lumens and Kelvin, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Lumens.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're all set. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Our next matter is the Newcastle Fire Department District number one, four ninety-one, uh, King Street. This is an application for a site development plan amendment for modification of the previously approved site lighting. Um, my understanding is that we, we might have a comment from a member of the public, and what we can do is, uh, upon motion is reopen the public hearing. It's my understanding that there was some sort of, um, deficiency in notice, uh, and, um, so if, if we're okay with this, is there a motion then to reopen the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this will be a continued, I guess, public hearing at this point, reopened. So anyway, sir, I think you, you were looking to, sorry about, uh, you missing the last one. In action pack first meeting.
It happens.
Yes, it does.
And this is not my first appearance before this, uh, before this board. Uh, if you recall, I appeared before you several times, before the actual permit was issued on this project back in, I think it was, I don't know what, it's been a long time, two thousand sixteen?
Uh, two, uh, I think it's two thousand sixteen, yeah, sixteen.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Can you state your name and address for the record please?
Yes, I'm gonna do it. I, I'm getting around to it. My name is Greg Karlock.
Thank you.
Same name. Nothing's changed.
My, uh, my address is five seventeen King Street. And the reason I appeared before, as I say, was also in connection with this particular, uh, project. My house is directly parallel to the easement on the fire department property. So I'm about, I don't know, five feet off the property.
Are you east, directly east of the, uh, the neighboring property, east of the, uh, now, once they acquired the animal house, uh, animal hospital, uh?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, about, I guess I'll start from the beginning then. Uh, I think it was October, although I'm not a hundred percent certain, because I never got, I never got all the paperwork on this. If it wasn't October, it was the beginning of November. That, uh, the firehouse decided that they would go ahead with the installation of a certain group of lights on the back of the fire department, uh, existing building. The original plan that was approved called for three lights. They put up five lights. The lumen rating on the three lights they were supposed to pick up, I have to give you a range on that because I really didn't have enough time to totally research that issue. It was somewhere between eight hundred and twenty-one hundred per light. The five lights they put up, they're rated at twenty thousand, five hundred and something. So, uh, obviously, when they took the trees down and I saw these lights for the first time, I was not a happy camper. And I thought that it would be reasonable to ask the fire department to turn the lights off when they weren't there. Seems reasonable to me. And they, of course, said, it's a safety issue, so the answer was no. So I met with, uh, I met with Dwight Smith several times, and I had a number of discussions with him, and we got nowhere. So I, uh, I came to, uh, the building department and I made a complaint. And they said they would look into it and send somebody out, and they came back with the explanation that nothing I can do about it, it's a safety issue. The reason I was particularly concerned about this is because with a hundred thousand lumens of light pointed at my house, it felt a bit intrusive, as you can, as you can, as you can understand. As a matter of fact, it was so intrusive that I had, you know, I have, uh, I have shades that block most of the light. I don't like to use them, but I didn't have much of a choice. To be honest with you, I could turn off the lights in my house in the middle of the night, and I wouldn't have to turn another light on because of the intrusive nature of the, of the, of the lights that they put up back there. So, um, I didn't have much of a, an alternative at that point, I thought. But I continued, I had some personal issues which sort of took me away from the project for a couple of months. Anyway, um, the, uh, the, uh, the, what do they call them, construction notes? Contractors notes, something like that. In going through them over the last couple of days, I found that LT four, uh, construction note. And, uh, I would like to read it, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. Here, I'll put it. So I don't have my, uh, my, my regular glasses, they're in the shop. But I stole my wife's reading glasses, and I think, I actually chose these, they're not too bad. The first ones I picked were purple with token dots, so I figured I'd try these out and see how it is. So forgive me if I, uh, I'm not reading so well, but if I can read it, hold on. Anyway, this says, uh, I don't think I can read it, uh. Can I ask one of you guys to read it?
Can you read, can you read this one? Isn't that what you're looking for?
Oh, yeah, much better. My little, my little thing here is-
Oh, no wonder.
I don't think anybody can.
Yeah.
You know, it's a bit tough when you know, okay, so this is a lot easier. The site lighting, with the exception of safety lighting, shall only be on when there are events at the site or emergency calls. The lights shall remain on for no more than an hour after the end of an event or after the emergency crews come back. There's another thing in here about the building inspector, but it's irrelevant to this issue. Thank you. So it seemed to me that that was a pretty clear, that was a pretty clear indication of, of, uh, of what was supposed to happen. The fact that I spent nine months with these lights glaring me, you know, uh, as close to my, as my house is, indicated that, you know, something was not, something was not, was not right with this. And, uh, in fact, as I go back through things, and I, as I, and I have a recollection of, of the discussions that I had with the fire department, they were pretty consistent about saying that these were safety lights.
Well, that seems to be what you read there. That seems to be the, um, the clause that they can look toward, because it said with, with the exception of safety. So that's why I think they keep going back to safety.
And that's what they've done throughout everything in this submission. If you looked at the submission, every letter mentions safety and lights.
Yeah, it seems to be the exception that they can point toward.
Every piece of paper that they actually drew to support their position here suggests that they are continued to go to, to take the position that if there are lights there and if they get mounted on the side of the building, they were going to continue to do exactly what they've done for the last nine months. That's a problem, a serious problem.
So we looked at this last time, we saw the, the drawings and the sketches, and they had some photographs, I, I just, for myself, I just wanna make clear to myself that I understand this. We know that they put in, you know, extra lights from what was approved, but those are on the, uh, northwest side, because the building's kind of, you know, kind of cornered there at, uh, it seems to be, I think, those were on the northwest corner and facing down, they're supposed to be facing down. So we heard that the spillage from those lights was limited to the properties directly to the north, not to yours, to the east. Um, but that's, that's a-
Yes, so you're, he's on the right-hand side?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm on the right-hand side.
So aren't those lights sheltered by the back of the?
Not, not before they started the, uh, the, uh, to erect the building.
Right. That was my next question, what is, what is your-
So once they started to get the steelwork up.
Yeah, like, will those, will your home be hidden once the addition is built?
Then- Correct.
Will your home be hidden from those lights?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a temporary issue that we got here?
It's a what?
A temporary issue? Theoretically, because you're having-
Yeah, they're probably gonna be done with the construction of the wall, which is, I might suggest why this particular proposal was submitted when it was. Once the walls are finished, I won't have to look at those lights anymore.
Right.
Now, of course, they're also putting additional lights up on the east side of the, uh, of the new extension. Those were not on the original plans, so they're adding three lights, uh, as close to my house as they can get. They're also adding another light on the northern section, uh, closer to my house, which will make four there instead of three. In front of the building, which I can also see, they're adding two lights to the one that is already there. So if you add up all of the lights that they're adding, and of course, if you looked at carefully at the stuff, they also wanna leave the lights that were pre-existing. Okay, so on the back of the building, there are ten pre-existing lights. Together with the five lights, I don't even know what the lumen situation is with that. It's more than a hundred thousand lumens, and it's at least fifteen lights. And if you add the other lights in for the perimeter of the building, you're at about forty to forty-five lights. Now, I don't think there's that many lights in the Walgreens shopping center. I don't have any idea why they would wanna put these lights up. Frankly, if we enforce LT four and realize that they, they are not safety lights, these are just lights. They can't make them safety lights by turning them on. They can't create a problem by setting up the lights in that way. If there's nobody there, they don't need the lights. There's no safety issue in the parking lot if there are no cars and no people. There's no safety issue in the front of the, so to claim that this is a safety issue is ridiculous, but that's what they're going to do. And at some point, if you approve all of these lights, they're gonna start turning them on, and then they're gonna leave them on. And I'm gonna be stuck for the rest of my life in this house with forty-some odd lights blazing away within a hundred feet of my house. Uh, it's nuts.
Well, the, the, there's two things. Uh, the issues that we, we looked at and considered, uh, was the safety. And the safety is, is, is different from an, an event. And the safety is that these guys pull up, if there's a fire, they're pulling up haphazard in the back there, usually in the back, maybe on the side now, because there'll be two parking lots. And, you know, they're pulling up, who knows, it could be rainy, it could be night, it could be ice, it could be slippery, it could be snow. So their issue, what they raised with us was, that was the safety issue, was for the men, it was for the first responders coming in there, so they wanted it to be lifted, going upstairs, going in, et cetera. And they're doing this under very rushed circumstances. So it's separate and apart from the events. Uh, the events, you know, from what they told us, you know, for events, they'll be shutting those off. So what we heard was, and then we had actually asked for some additional photometric information, uh, was that the spillage, that is what goes off of their site, because it's supposed to be downward, uh, shining, et cetera,
Right.
uh, was limited, and it was represented to us that there was no spillage toward your house, toward the east. The only spillage that went off-site was to the north, which was the content property and the, um, car wash property. Um, but if there is more spillage, and we did ask for that additional information, I don't know if we've received it, but that was one of the conditions that we asked for, for them to prove it and have a licensed photo, photometric person give us, engineer give that information to us.
Well, I can't believe there's no spillage coming off the three lights that they're gonna put on the east side of that building.
Well, you can do those sometimes with hoods, you can do it downward.
You can.
Yes.
But when you mount them twenty feet high and your, your block, your buffer is made out of bushes that are three feet high or four feet high, I'm gonna be looking up at those lights. I don't wanna look at them all the time. If they wanna put them on when people are in the parking lot, fine, as long as they're using the building, I don't care what they do with the lights. But when they're not there, there's nobody there, and most of the time, there is nobody there. There's no reason for these lights to be on.
Well, you know, if, if it is a safety issue, which we all understand, middle of the night, it's snow and ice, the guys don't wanna be, they wanna see where they're going, right? I don't know how many emergencies happen, but let's say there's one emergency a day where the fire department rushes to the building. That's realistic. It happens in the middle of the night, two in the morning, right? Let's say that happens. For the, for that, I think what the neighbor's saying, okay, for the other eleven hours of nighttime, do the lights have to be blaring? Can the lights be on when the, when the emergency event occurs? And maybe there's a series of sensors or something back there that throws the lights on when the guys pull their cars into the parking lot.
They already have motion sensors.
They stay on for fifteen, they stay on for fifteen minutes or whatever it is, and then when everybody goes home, the lights click off. Maybe there's a compromise.
I have no problem with that. They already, those existing lights that are in the back of the building, they're all hooked up to motion sensors.
Yeah, maybe when they blow the horn, that, that's when, when the lights would go on.
Right.
They don't blow it anymore, thankfully.
But, but, you know, maybe with something, yeah.
No, but they're gonna blow it again, because they're, of course, that's another issue.
Only if there's a- Yeah, no, I, I live up the road. Um, we're only supposed to utilize it when there's a confirmed structure fire. And rest assured, I will enforce that rule.
So you're up the hill. How do you like driving down the hill with those lights on in the back of the building, honestly?
Yes. Well, I- So, so I was not physically here at the meeting when we discussed this, but I dialed in. And to your point, the five lights that they put on, and I drive by it multiple times a day, especially at night, I was surprised at how bright it was, because not necessarily from the lumen spillage, but from the same issue that occurred with the Chappaqua West Women Tennis Club, where there were the lights that they replaced, where they were not, lumens were not coming from those lights onto the adjacent properties, but the residents on, I think it was Oak Hill and, right, they saw these new lights, and there was, there was, I, I don't remember how that ended up, but that was, that was the big issue there. And if I recall correctly, these five lights were not part of the original approval when they went for the, so up until fall of last year, for however long the firehouse has been there, they, they didn't have a, a, a significant issue that would have caused them to come to us earlier to add those lights. So I, I had a concern about those five lights that went on, to Mr. Sanzari's point, and I think you've admitted it, they're gonna be blocked, and when that wall gets built up, will get built up.
They're not gonna be an issue.
Right, they're not gonna be an issue. I'm more concerned about, I'm more concerned about the ones, I don't know, it's around the perimeter on the east side
The new ones.
and that are adjacent to his property, and then after coming back to Chappaqua last week, there's a residence that is diagonal across, cross King Street, so opposite where their parking lot is, which I don't know if that's a abandoned house.
No, they're reconstructing.
Um, yeah, I've seen some work going on there, but that's also gonna be, uh, something. So to his point, if there is an ability to, um, they do make the lights that are dim, right? And when the second there's motion, they pop onto full and a timer that's sufficient to the fire department, I think that is a, a, a good compromise that would at least mitigate the impact to you as much as possible, um, given that they really would only go, go on when there's movement there.
Yeah, I'm perfectly happy with it.
I think the other issue, and you guys know better than I, um, is there a way on, with the new lights, uh, that they don't have to be stationed so high on the building, bring them down lower so that they are just lighting the parking area and the sidewalk along there, there's a sidewalk there, and not, you know, as you, as you point out, the higher you make it, the more disturbance you have off-site.
Quite frankly, I think if they came to us, that would have been something we would have talked about at the time. Because if you're only looking to illuminate those parking spots, you don't need to have them at the top of the building. You could quite frankly have some of the exist, additional lights, just have the floodlights low down. You're not looking to make this thing light up like a baseball field, you're looking to give enough lumens that you're not, you know, you, yeah, you can see.
Right, for, again, for safety. Yeah.
And they, and they've, they've, they've arranged for a small parking lot between my house and the east side of the building.
Right.
It has five spaces. I mean, if you think about it, why would you need three overhead lights and a pole light to provide enough illumination for five parking spaces? Even in back of the building, there are fourteen parking spaces. If you add everything up, they've got almost a light for every, for every parking space. Why would you do that? I don't, I don't get it.
Is the pole light, uh, toward your property, on the property line, and shining back towards the, the ground?
Yeah, of course it is. Yeah, it has an arrow that points right at my windows. I don't get it, I just don't get it. I mean, I'm all for safety in the fire department. I pay my fifty bucks every year to make a donation. So I'm not trying to hurt firemen, but golly, you know, today, you can turn your heat on with your cell phone. You can turn your lights on with a cell phone. I open up my garage door with a remote. When they press the button that says, everybody needs to come in, it's a fire, they can press the button on their cell phone that says, turn on the lights. There's never gonna be a situation where they have to come into a dark parking area. They can set it up, so that that's what happens. There's no reason not to do that. It just makes me crazy, I have to say, I, you know, thank you for letting me vent. But nine months having the lights in my bedroom, that's a bit much, but no, they wouldn't consider anything. You know what my real fear is? You're gonna put all these lights up, and you know what they're gonna do? They're gonna start leaving them on, and they're just gonna end up leaving them on the entire time and not come to you, and they're certainly not coming to me. I mean, why do they have to go ahead and install these lights, which they had to know, where they said they weren't gonna put the lights up that were proposed in the plan, because it was a budget problem for them. So they eliminated the small lights that are eight hundred lumens, and they put up twenty thousand lumens. And they put up twenty thousand lumen lights, and there's five of them. It's no budget issue. I mean, you know, this is like a shell game, I'm sorry, it's just.
Well, we did, we did ask for that information and the JMC folks did not have it for us at the last meeting.
Correct.
And I agree, you were specific about that. Not just the Kelvin, but you were really after the lumens, what are they?
I think we've covered this, you know, like twice already. And I think what everybody is saying on the seats here is, it has to be looked at before it goes any farther. And if you wanted to, if, if I could vote, which not today, I can't.
Yeah, Ken, no, you're in, you're in.
I, I, I did a lot of research, but I didn't have much time, so I couldn't really figure it out.
Yeah, well, um, it, it seems they take a lot of time on a lot of things. It's just people, somebody has to be looking at progress on the lighting that is gonna change, you know, or come with proof, you know, that it is necessary to, you know, have all these lights on. Some people might get confused and think it's like a, you know, one of the merry-go-rounds going on at night, something like that. So I, I couldn't, I, I don't see the, the benefit of these six. I mean, if they were, if they were smaller, and others that they have changed out for the, what did you say, the eighties for the, you know, twenty thousand? That's nice.
I mean, really, what's.
The good point about that is that if you bring your food in the, in the morning, you can toast your everything and everything, you don't have to go home. That's the only benefit I see so far.
I mean, what stops them from just disregarding that provision?
What we can do is, we can continue the public hearing, if we so desire, and request the information that we talked about in the minutes, in tonight's minutes for the last meeting. And suggest that, you know, if they're going to have lights on all the time, that would be very dim ambient light. And then work out some system when there's an emergency in advance when the horn, whatever, the virtual horn goes off or however they notice each other. You know, when that is done, then it triggers the, the emergency lighting, that makes good sense. And we can take a look at the, and we specifically asked about the east side, what those lights were. They specifically said, there's no spillage on the east side. Yet, we really didn't have a very comprehensive study on that, frankly. So maybe we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves here a little bit. And we should continue the public hearing and get this additional information from the department.
Well, in, in the effort to advance it last meeting, we agreed to, we included language that there would be a post-construction lighting assessment to evaluate lighting needs and identify opportunities to reduce or replace fixtures in order to allow minimal limp, I mean, I'm looking at the updated, lights spillage onto neighboring properties. As part of that, right, they're gonna, they're gonna have to do a post, a pre, a post-construction study that shows what their illumination is, the, the light pollution that's coming off of their, off the property. They turn off all the lights, they take a reading, they turn on all the lights, they see the difference, that's what they're causing, there's no doubt about it. I wonder if we can maybe expand this language to include that, that they will do improvements that would limit or eliminate spillage except for in the event of, of a active response or whatever. Something like that, for, for the east side at least.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, one of the issues is, maybe we're tackling this a little differently too. We're talking only about spillage, and maybe the concern is that these are being posted pretty high up on the buildings, it's not just spillage. It's, uh.
Exposure.
Yeah, it's the, it's the visual exposure.
It's the entire lighting strategy.
Exactly.
And, and also with these, with these twenty thousand ones, what's the cost per year to run them?
Well.
You can't really do cost.
Yeah, they're, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, they're, they're very, it's very bright in the back.
Right, well, but, but also you're bringing out, are all these lights necessary? Do, you know, the gentleman pointed out, there's about one light for every space, right? Is that necessary?
And I think we had pointed out that we'd run the study and then perhaps they would turn off some lights. Maybe the word perhaps needs to go away, maybe it's not so wishy-washy and gray. And we do the study and maybe there's more, these lights are turned off, so to speak.
And I think bringing the lights down, even the ones that are in the back, bring them down lower on the building.
Lower, that way they don't flood much.
Exactly, because it's not just the spillage, I, although we have a spillage issue anyway.
It's a direct problem.
That's there, yes.
That's there, and that's bad enough. But in addition, I think it's this visual exposure that we also have, that you guys have very aptly tackled, thank you, and identified. So I, I, I think we got a little ahead of ourselves and really need to continue the public hearing and get this information back from the fire department. As well as the, you know, these things.
Should we ask them if they've done any work on this since last time? The applicant?
Are they here?
Yes.
Oh, they're here. Yes.
Yeah, I saw Joe up there.
Joe.
Joe's up there.
Good evening.
Hey, Joe.
Thank you.
Joe, have you, we talked last time and, and we're going to see some photometric studies, et cetera, I don't know, we haven't seen it. I don't think staff have seen it, we haven't seen it. So, where are we?
Last, last time we talked, the photometric studies were coming after construction related to the spillage on the north side of the building. And there was one spot that I presented for that one light on the driveway out to Memorial Drive. Uh, had resulted in some spillage that we would shift that light to the south into the site a little bit to eliminate that spillage on the property line at Memorial Drive there, which we haven't done, I haven't submitted it yet, because I was waiting on this meeting to, you know, finalize everything and, uh, and go from there, so.
Okay.
I, I believe, just, just, I have to check, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But I think the, the three lights that are on the building on the east side next to the parking lot, I believe those are like above the door, like eight feet, those are not very high on the door. Those are like, you know, light fixtures at the door. A typical, you know, kinda small light fixture at the door, which is the, the, in that case, the, the plan got advanced a little bit more, so we're showing the lights that are proposed. It wasn't, you know, added light for a particular reason. And a lot of the times when you're doing these things, the lights that are at the doors are so small and minimal, they don't even get shown. Or they're not even known at the time when we're doing the planning process.
What about the pole light that's on the east side?
The pole light, I think is necessary to get the minimal light that we have in that parking lot. We only have in that parking lot at the far edge of the parking lot, like point one, point two foot candles, which is not very much.
Well, I, I, um, I, I think what we really should look at when it comes to the parking areas is what the foot candles are at the parking spaces themselves. That's the area that's gonna be used by the firemen, that's, that's the area that they're going to be rushing toward. So the fact that they're fairly low at the edge of the parking lot, but if they could be even lower toward the building, I think it could be helpful. And again, I, I think it's a great idea, Joe, or a great point that you raised, that the lights on the east side are, are low. That's a concern, so if they, if we can do that in, in other areas as well, it, it not only will take care of the spillage, but this whole visual exposure issue is, is one that we are often concerned with and, and would be helpful. Now, I, we understand that that might lead to some sort of relocation of some of these lights or maybe elimination of some of these lights, but what we're hearing is, and we understand that this will be temporary, but in terms of, of, of the neighbor to the east right now, but it's, 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 um, it's more than that also. I mean, this is a central area where people are driving past all the time, it's just, it looks like a stadium. So it shouldn't, it looks, it should look like a stadium when you need it to look like a stadium for safety. But otherwise, it should not, uh, look like a stadium.
You also, I think, should ask for information related to the timing of the lights and, you know, how that works.
Yeah, I, I, I think so, but I, I, I think they've heard that I, as far as I'm concerned, the bright lights should only come on for emergencies through some sort of mechanism that they set up. But then the others should be like we see throughout the town, ambient, low-level lights.
Correct.
Um, and.
But they should present to us their strategy for how they're gonna have those lights go on and off.
Correct.
Yes.
We need to see a protocol.
Right, we've talked about it, but they need to, we need to see what they're planning on implementing.
Yeah, yeah.
And also, before more lights go up and down on the building, we ask that the applicant doesn't do that again and come talk to us as we're in the middle of going through this process. Because there's already been two times now where the applicant's gone forward and done stuff and then come back to the planning board asking for forgiveness, so let's not have a third time.
Sounds like a plan, good point. So, um, is there a motion then to continue the public hearing subject to receipt of the additional information that we've requested from the applicant?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's carried. So what we'll do is we'll look to the fire department to provide us with some additional information regarding the photometrics, the locations of the lights on the buildings, with an eye towards strategies toward reducing, reducing the visual impacts as well as spillage. And then of course, some sort of protocol regarding the, um, uh, safety lighting and, and how that will be done. I think that'll push some good changes.
Chairman, were these, we're looking at red line here, are these their comments?
No.
No.
Okay, no.
Those were changes that we made.
Okay. Um.
There were, there were a couple of additional changes provided by their attorney. Um, they're not in there, but we, 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 we will.
We're gonna be reviewing, yeah, we'll add them.
Yeah, okay, all right, I had a, I had written some handwritten comments here, I'll send them to you.
Okay.
Do, do we have a date for the continued public hearing?
Uh, we need to receive your information, so, um, what we can do is, we can schedule it.
We have to schedule September.
What does it look like, Felicia?
We need the information received by August twenty fifth for the September sixteenth meeting.
August twenty fifth for September sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good.
Yep.
Uh, weeknight and enjoy your August.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Our next matter is the two C eleven, it's informal hearing. It's the, uh, eleven Hammond Ridge, application for a site development plan approval for legalization of a patio and driveway extension. For disclosure, transparency, this apparently is a neighbor of mine, I have no idea, I've never seen your house. You are many feet away from me, up a cliff and, and through a swamp and et cetera, so.
J V Verandas, ARQBC, representing the client. I need the, uh, outline. Uh, this is a property, Hammond Ridge is a thirty five home subdivision, nineteen eleven in Newcastle, fifteen in North Castle. Um, I'm thinking back to two thousand and four, when this lot, lot thirty three was developed. The, the owner of the house until last year's July, uh, the haze were, uh, need some additional, oh, sorry. This is additional work, uh, to the property, uh, not, uh, like benefit of a full apartment. They increased the driveway and they increased the patio in the rear. That came to a total of nineteen hundred sixty-three square feet area that was increased. And that puts over the area of development, or, or thirteen percent of two thousand, uh, one thousand two hundred eighty-seven square feet. We presented plans in the process of creating a stormwater development for the excess impervious areas that we have now. And, uh, we will receive the comment from, uh, from locals. And we are gonna, I think, to address, you know, some stormwater issues and some mitigation that needs to be done.
Okay. Sabrina, your comments?
Sure. Um, this application of the white line amendment is a type two action. So there's no state environmental policy review act proceedings that you need to, um, address at this time. Um, I requested that, uh, you know, it's a coverage issue. Um, they're over in their development coverage, um, by about one thousand two hundred eighty-seven square feet. I actually need a coverage map detailing the areas of the improvements that have been made in the building so that we can confirm that that is the limit of coverage that you need. Um, also, for the board's information, this, uh, lot lies within a conservation subdivision. Um, there is a clearing and grading limit line that should be shown on the plans. This property does abut some of the designated open space, uh, in the back that this, this subdivision had identified. Um, it, it was very carefully delineated areas of open space throughout the subdivision. So that clearing and grading limit line should be put on the plan so we can understand where that line is in relation to the improvements and whether or not mitigation is required.
Do you have that information?
Yes, we do now, yeah.
And that's the end of my challenge.
Okay. Jeff, you had some comments? Uh, I think you're good.
I have a comment.
Sure.
So, this is in the document here, this one. Okay, and I get a little confused here on item number nine on page two or three, where it says, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code? And then there's an opportunity to say no or yes. And no, no, nothing was said there. If the proposed action will exceed requirements described design features and technologies. So if there's gonna be changes, that's understood, the second piece. I would, um, suggest that, that a better look at that and, and see who his English is better, mine or whoever's someone else's.
Okay. Jeff, you had some thoughts?
Uh, yeah, just a cou- couple of, uh, a couple of technical, uh, comments I had. I think I need to get done, but I don't think it's gonna be anything we're already, um, you know, uh, you know, one thing we asked for is just a description of, for the, for the board's, uh, you know, for the board's view, you know, why this is, you know, why this is happening, why it happened. Um, still a better understanding of, uh, the basis for the, for the, the, uh, changes that were made. Um, and Sabrina mentioned the clearing and grading limit, I, I just, I just kind of overrelayed, uh, you know, and, uh, the best I could. And it looks like the argument that I mentioned, the clearing and grading limit line, um, they were, it looks like it affected some deep slopes, so the, the code requires an analysis of, uh, I don't know if they're getting over the, the, the fifteen thousand, uh, square footage, but, uh, we did just show that on the plans and, uh, again, for the planning boards of, you know, review, some, you know, pre-development photos. If they're available, I don't know when it's happening, but, um, just to see the, you know, the, the changes from before and now.
Okay. I, I think Dennis, you had some, you had some frustration.
Um, right, I think I just simply said, you know, in a few more words on the memo, my comment is I reserve the right to comment. You know, when I see some of your ways that you must, you know, you've mentioned, you've mentioned, and you've shown, and then there are excuses or overages or adjustments, then, okay. I mean, that's just for GIs and just historical views, we see what's appropriate, you know, the vision. Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm just, sure, if, maybe you could help me out. So the prior owner did some stuff on the property they weren't supposed to do. Your app, your client purchased the home, you're here today to clean up somebody else's mess?
Yes, we're kinda.
And are you guys looking, are you guys looking to do work on the property in the future? And this is just the first step, or you're just here cleaning up somebody else's mess?
We're cleaning up the, basically, the prior owner issues, you know.
So is, and.
The current owner did not do the work, so right now, there is a, uh, I believe this came up when the closing was, uh, drawn on. So, um, it needs to be rectified. But, yes, the current owner is not proposing any work.
So I'm just, I'm just trying, who, who's requiring this to be done? If you bought the house and it was already pre-existing and you guys aren't doing any work.
It happens all the time.
So.
Unfortunately, yes.
I, I, I mean, it's.
No, but, but if they're not, but if they, if they just remain silent, what, what is it, upon closing, the town tells them that they have to clean up?
Yes, we do a title search. Like, when a title search occurs and there's issues that come up on the property, one of them being construction without permits.
So either the owner, the seller, or the buyer's gotta clean it up before this get finished?
It's whatever negotiation occurs is part of the closing of the house. It's whatever negotiation occurs is part of the closing of the house.
Ah ha, gotcha, okay.
So this applicant agreed to clean up the errors as part of their purchase of the home.
Thank you, that was what I was trying to find out the why.
And is that why the escrow account is in the haze's name?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so the seller is the one that is taking.
Paying for it.
Paying for it.
It's fine, I mean, I can, but I figured.
Gotcha, okay, that helps a lot, okay.
Yes.
Hey, hey, this is, this is, can you hear me? This is Ryan Tuesday, I'm the new owner, um.
Yeah.
Uh I apologize, I'm interjected back all over, but I I wanted to dial in, uh I I think it was was mentioned as accurate, we're not looking to do any additional work here. Um it was part of the. A closing agreement where we agreed to close, but they agreed to clean up the permitting issues that were not properly done before we closed. Uh that's that's what's all all this is part of.
Okay.
Yeah, I suppose hi, my name is Aaron Hayes, we were the previous owners, I just wanted to make it known that I'm here as well. Um we're just trying to help get the situation obviously move forward and we're happy to do whatever we need to do at this point. Um so I'm here as well, thanks.
Well, seems to me the bottom line is that there was some widening of the driveway and a patio put in in the back.
I don't. Yes. It's not free, it wasn't patio, it was a lot.
Uh oh yes, about twelve hundred feet total.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. How much uh how much wider was the driveway made?
Uh it's not a, it's just the in. The wider part of the driveway where there is uh they added a couple of feet in one end to work so they can pull pull back better.
Mm-hmm.
And it happened to be there, it's not, you know, there's no Steve Klobzner. The biggest challenge has been to find an area to do the stormwater. And yeah.
Um the other thing I noticed in this aerial is there looks like there was additional landscaping that was planted. Um so I mean Dennis, if that's something that we have a record of. I don't know if that helps out, but uh between the aerial of two thousand eighteen and twenty twenty four, it looks like to plan north. There's plantings of potential evergreens that were installed as part of the whatever they worked they did.
Excuse me, your your analysis would be mine, I I just look at aerials and see if I could, you know, pick up differences. Uh and then just investigate those areas as to what's there today, I'm. I there's no way I'm, you know, I I can go to citrus or evergreen, that's the best thing I can commit to, you know, most of an aerial photo, I'd just be asking what kind of tree or shrub it is is up. So that that nothing would be at all be reduced. My my only other question, because I just noticed it, um and since we do have somebody that has some oven outs and boots on the ground. That would be you Chairman, um with respect to this stone fire pit, is that wood, is that gas? Um just curious.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah, pro- pro aim.
Perfect, thank you.
Dennis, in in um an fairness to you, if you if you don't wanna answer, it's fine, but do you have any kind of gut feel as to what mitigation might might occur here? To offset uh I mean short of, you know, pulling up driveway, pulling up patio. Is there something here that jumps out at you that you think would be worthwhile and something that the applicant could uh could pursue? To satisfy um you know, this, I mean obviously the exceedings here?
Sure, um you if we're not gonna go down the road like you said of moving development.
Right, well, we might, but if if we don't, as it all sorts of.
Right, 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 then we could always improve green pavement, as I like to call it, um AKA maintaining turf cover. There's always a way to improve on on that, you know, and and definitely some of these that we've done it, I think twice already for for Hammond Ridge, for other properties, you know. There you could just investigate the property and see where it makes sense to, you know, have sort of this seamless connection to what hasn't been um really manipulated or 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 landscaped or 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 was maintained. Um you know, there's no need to put, you know, I know people like to do this and that's why I'm not picking on it, but you know. To 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 put like a little circular wildflower meadow surrounded by, you know, all this, all this lawn of like, I, you know, it's it's not just a shell game, it's, you know, where would it make sense to do something like that? I, you know. I guess, you know, as you're saying, this isn't, um where it doesn't appear to be, uh you know, tens of thousands of square feet that you would have to like worry about, so I think that that could be a comedy, you know. I haven't seen the site and of course admit that, but.
Okay. I I was wondering also if you might have some thoughts uh when you get out to see the site in terms of the public space, the open space and how that might be better protected or further protected, et cetera.
Okay.
Cause I think we have a trail here and we have open space here.
Right.
I don't think this is the lot that has the uh. The the rock. There's a rock.
Oh, okay.
Henry knew all about the rock. We had big fights over the rock.
Um also on page S one hundred. I was trying to figure out what the different colors were.
We will give you a note that we we missed in the last time, we will do a selection.
Um yeah, whatever uh information on that would be much appreciated, but.
Okay, anyone else anything? Okay, so uh when you get your material in, we'll see you uh as the song says, in September or later, whenever you get it in, okay?
Thank you.
Very good, thanks.
Good night.
Good night.
Here we go.
We got two minutes now.
Yes. Well, uh first of all, just uh for notification, the uh the application for the New York Metropolitan Reference and Resource Library has been pushed over, so that cannot be heard this evening. And we have minutes of the July one meeting.
Do you want to make a different changes in these minutes?
In the.
Yeah.
Because it was about the fire department, there's some of these changes?
Um my my changes were, the main main changes, wherever we're talking about the twenty seven hundred and three thousand, right?
Mm-hmm.
If I recall correctly, the gentleman said they'd not ordered the lights, so if they haven't ordered the lights, we talked about them ordering at twenty seven hundred.
Yeah.
And then for replacement, maximum of twenty seven hundred Kelvin, not at, you know, if they wanna go lower, I think we're happy with that.
Sure, right, now I had a question, which they're not here, is, you know, do they replace these things in five years, ten years or twenty years? So are they gonna be twenty years that we're waiting for the lights to be replaced?
I think they had a ten, well, it depends how how long they're on, I think they had a ten thousand e uh hour light.
Right.
So if they're on twenty four seven.
They shouldn't be on that much.
They shouldn't be on.
Listen, I have ten thousand hour lights and I don't think, I don't think I'll be alive.
They don't last ten thousand.
Oh, come on, hang on a little longer.
Now, now.
You'd be surprised how invigorating this is, I tell you.
But um I think the the comments in the um in the minutes, we don't talk about the three thousands, I think those are.
Okay. Any uh thoughts, comments on the minutes as drafted? If not, is there a motion to adopt uh to adopt the minutes of July one?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, okay, uh we have some discussion items. Um Sabrina is kind enough to um trees, put uh on the ass here for all of us. Uh the way the tree preservation uh law currently reads. We had the situation uh recently with two applications. Um and we discovered what we thought, you know, was a discrepancy in the law or potential inconsistency. And I think John, it was the word that um the an applicant could not be required to have uh more than one application per year, I'm not stating exactly verbatim, but that's the gist of it.
It's on page two, item F.
Then we can have it verbatim. So um. So I I thought it might be more intelligent to substitute the word required for approved or granted, permitted. Because it's not really that it's um without we're requiring it, uh we require it based on the application. So I think it really goes to approval, but one of the issues that that came up during our last two discussions, which was Kittle House and Ripperwell. Was uh there were extenuating circumstances and it seems to be that the approving body, whether it's Dennis, whether it's ZBA, whether it's uh planning board, uh ERB. Um uh should have some sort of ability, uh some sort of discretion. Where there is demonstrable hardship to an applicant to grant more than a single application during the course of a year. Those would be, I think, extenuating circumstances, because I think the the clear public uh policy of the town board and reflected in the law. Is they don't want people coming in with multiple applications so they can effectively clear cut a property just by filing different applications during the course of the year. So that was clearly, I think, the the public policy reflected in the law, I I just think that um we might wanna recommend that the town board takes a look at this and and makes a change in that law. Board from required to permitted or granted approved. And then again, give the approving authority uh some discretion as we exercised uh in those last two applications. Where we saw that it was, there were, you know, extenuating circumstances. In each case, especially in the Kittle House, I think the applicant uh demonstrated to us that that it would be significant hardship to the applicant. And um there wasn't really any public policy necessarily being disrupted. And um you know, we 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 went with it, I think it would be better just to have so a touchstone in the code for uh whatever approving uh authority might be, you know, looking at these. Uh so that we we make it understood that it's extenuating and only at a hardship that can be demonstrated. But for the most part, the public policy has to be supported with nothing more than what we do.
Can, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
So so we could change required to permitted and then after sought, add however comma. If application is made to an approving board, that board may consider issuance of additional permits based upon the extenuating circumstances. Which may include harsh hardship and other and you know.
Other considerations.
Other considerations.
True.
Unless counsel says hardship really shouldn't be in the code and it just should be extenuating circumstances.
I would just leave it as extenuating circumstances.
Extenuating circumstances.
Okay.
Now, and this is, this is come twice in the past month.
Yeah, which we, we have had in years.
Correct, and the applications both.
Has it come, has it come up a lot in the, or just, we just got with these two guys recently?
You got these two applications, they were both to your board and the zoning board.
Right.
So that will give the boards the authority, not Dennis, but the board.
Right.
So Sabrina, what was the word you recommended instead of required?
Permitted.
Permitted, not granted?
Well, Dennis, do you issue a permit or do you?
Or issued?
Yeah, I issue tree removal permits, that's.
You issue a permit?
Yeah. So I think, you know, I I don't know if this place.
Should it not be permitted?
Well, you're saying permitted, not permitted.
Oh, shall be granted.
Right.
We should change it to granted.
Yeah.
Well, I I'm just asking if, you know, does this capture, you know, a situation whereby some, you know, I mean, we're a little country club, obviously owns a lot of property. Um and in their case, you know, the first one was able to be couched under the guise of like a set fit remediation. So that's kind of like a specific one time thing if it's done right, right, you know, so. Then to go, you know, the next um eleven months and whatever, twenty nine days, you know, not to have to. Do anything that may require tree removal permit because something like that happens, so my my point is is that if there's a way to capture, you know. These are two totally unrelated projects that to use the core of engineer's language, you know, have independent utility, right? One is not connected to the other, you're not trying to bifurcate, you know, you're not trying to segment, so. That's kind of how, you know, when it's just under my authority, that's kind of how I try to review it, you know, and not like you were saying Chairman, like it's a. Scheme or an end around to try to just, you know, you know, get on your knees and be able to take down more trees, you know, oh that rhymes, sorry. Um so so that's the only thing I was like trying to capture, cause I, you know, maybe that's too much of a wetland thing, cause it is core of engineers, but that's how I look at it. I love like independent utility, cause that's just kind of how I.
I think one of the things that that Sabrina recommended, which I thought made good sense, is only certain uh applications at a certain level. Would be eligible for the so-called hardship or uh uh treatment. And that would be something that's going at at the site plan, going to the planning board, going to the ZBA, et cetera. Um um we would leave you in the in the trenches fighting with the people.
That's how it is now.
So um I read this different.
Yeah, so do I.
As a developer.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I think we probably think the same thing.
Which basically says, I can submit an application to Dennis for three tree removal in January. And then that's, I get approved, that's all I need, and for the next eleven months, I can do whatever I want on this property to quote um. To the uh related to multiple activities regulated on this chapter, so any that's regulated under this chapter. That permit you gave me in January gives me carte blanche to go cut down as many trees as I want.
No, but the permit only calls out three trees.
Right, but it says, multiple activities related on this chapter may be issued for activity to take place during the twelve month period following the issuance. It being the intent of this chapter that no more than one permit shall be required irrespective of the amount and nature of removal sought. So I've 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 requested for three. I get approval, two months later, I'm out there with a chainsaw cutting down everything else, but hey, I got my permit irrespective.
You're the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I would run a.
Yeah, no, I I think, I mean, I, I guess, I.
That's a good point, because it runs, I think it runs afoul of the intent of the of the public policy, sure.
Uh I agree, Jeff. Uh yeah, I mean Jeff, you and I are on the same page, it's it's right, it's. It it's obviously not artfully written, but it's really about the burden that you're putting on the applicant to say you don't have to keep coming back for permits. So the question really that I would ask would just be, right, to Jeff's point, like how does this work mechanically? Meaning, right, because obviously we don't wanna be in a position, to Greg's point, where someone says, okay, I have a permit to cut down one tree and then they're, you know, doing whatever they want in their yard. That's obviously not the intent here, so in other words, if I have, I I understand what it says, but like I guess the question becomes, what is it, what what should? You know, what do we think it should really say, meaning, okay, if I have a permit to do certain work, what like, okay, maybe I don't have to get another permit. But at some point, maybe there's an amendment or something like that. I mean, again, maybe it's just about the cost of the permit or whatever it may be, being the burden on the applicant, but there has to be some mechanism where, okay, I'm entitled to do certain things. And yeah, I don't need another permit, but maybe, you know, I'd come back and the permit's amended or supplemented.
So so that's not what it's intended to do, and so let me make a suggestion, if we're going to edit this section, why don't we strike?
Yeah, well, you know, it's intended, but.
Everything at the front of this letter F and start with it being the intent.
Yeah. Something like that.
Yep.
Well, to add to your point, I I think the intent was, so if you're gonna, cause you you're for a board, you guys get public notification no matter what, if this is just an environmental coordinator. You only have to notify your neighbors within a hundred feet of the boundaries of the property for three more trees. So I thought, when I first read this, when I started this job, I'm like, okay, they don't want somebody to apply for twelve permits, one a month. And they've taken down twelve threes and twelve trees and never had to notify their neighbors, that's how I read it, so.
Yeah, I think the intent is there, but as someone who drives trucks through ambiguity in zoning code. I I I think I would have a successful case with the right attorney, arguing, hey, I came to you the first for a permit. Irrespective of the amount of nature of removal, you said I only need one permit every year.
Me, you you could argue that.
Yeah.
So we're gonna fix it.
We pay litigation, we pay litigation.
So.
But the the other part of it, the whole, the whole, you gotta read the the context of the statute in entirety, which is don't touch the trees without a permit.
Right.
So you you need a permit to touch every tree you're gonna touch.
And it and it tells you what kinds of trees you can touch, and how many.
And how big, and and you know, where where you measure, and you say like, oh, that's exempt by that clause, I I think, you know.
Ambiguity goes to the applicant in most in most instances.
Not when it's that strange.
We're gonna clarify.
But we respond.
But I think it really.
Right, but that's what, but that's what we're here for, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you clarify it, the way we're talking about it is, we don't want people segmenting, we don't want people coming into the fall and saying, these, I just need these two to go. If, oh by the way, it's springtime, now I want these three to go, you know, and to get around it. But if they can come, like Dennis said, that was a finite project, this is something completely different, I wasn't even looking at it, there's no effect on it, then he can go to the approving board and and go there.
So what about the case where someone is not trying to segment something, where they come in in January? So what about the case where someone is not trying to segment something, where they come in in January for a permit to take down three trees? To do a little project on the side of their house, they wrap it up in March, and then they come back in November to do another little project that's totally independent of the first one. But they can't because they have to wait two more months for the year to go?
Unless maybe.
They come to your board or.
Then they have to come to our board, okay.
Yes.
And then they, you know, and you say, no, you's waiting or, you know.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it shows that there's extenuating circumstance. That's why I think they should be having state laws.
So.
That was the whip wall thing, right, yeah, yeah.
So we can prepare um a changed language, have the chairman sign a memo to the town board.
Right, this is the town board, we don't change laws, right?
Right, it's a suggestion from the planning board to the town board to amend the code based on experience your board has seen.
Yeah.
No. Just ignore it. Yep.
And the need for clarification.
And uh. Storm, damage, stuff like that, that doesn't apply to this, okay. Invasives?
No. It applies.
It applies. There's still a tree, part of the ecosystem.
But it could be an extenuating circumstance. Okay.
Still, it's still taking care of birds and bees.
We look the other way and some of these or something. Dennis can, you know.
Going going down the list of where I would start.
I read it the same way you did. I thought the same thing. Well, it's an offer new.
That's good. I mean, it's 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 really good to get that uh perspective.
Isn't that why you asked me to join?
Absolutely. I mean, yes. We wanna know how how vile things can be. That's great. That really is. I I think it's very, very helpful, thank you. Good. So um anyway, you guys see, you know, word council and draft something that looks better, less ambiguous. Keep Jeff under control, so he doesn't drive a truck through our trees. Anyway, uh the next item is the Newcastle Code. This is the uh MFRC regulations. Uh again, this is town board policy, but you know, we've been asked to pick this up and have a conversation in terms of what we have right now. Uh I'll turn it over to Sabrina, but she has identified, which which I thought was very important, that there are ambiguities in this law. And questions in this law, and um she has asked the town board for guidance and maybe some clarification and maybe some change in the law. To help the building department, help her, and then ultimately help us as well on applications uh to clarify what what we wanna do. So um uh some of us sent in notes, I think Jeff, you sent a note in? I sent a note, Greg sent a note in, ladies.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good night.
I don't have your note, unless this is.
That's mine.
Okay.
So Jeff.
I don't have Jeff's.
These were given to you if you wanna give them out.
Oh.
That's why they were there, but.
Oh, there's a lot of pressure on you, because we gave yours.
But I haven't had a chance to read it yet.
Exactly, it's very short. So.
Do you have a copy?
Uh no, my.
If you don't have enough, I think I have more.
Need one more.
Thank you, Felicia.
Yep.
So anyway, um uh that was the task that was uh uh handed to us. And it's it's, I guess, fairly dormant, right? The town board hasn't really considered this at all in the last couple of months until now they're getting left up, I guess.
They're waiting, they're 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 kind of, they're not gonna do it during the summer months and they're waiting to hear from your board.
So it's our chance to weigh in in terms of um what we should do. I will tell you that my my take on it was, I thought the the challenge here was the discrepancies. And I thought that the the first challenge was um to tackle those discrepancies and to clear those up. So get rid of the problems in the existing law. Um and then go forward from there uh to address the policy issues that we want to either change or embrace, et cetera. Uh my thinking was, by the way, uh when I made the recommendation to to Sabrina was that. In all cases where there was a discrepancy, my recommendation was to take the more conservative interpretation. For two reasons. First of all, this is going to be a fairly emotional discussion among people uh in the town. Uh you'll say that this is something that some people are very tied to. Secondly, I think if you take the more conservative one, what will happen is um, I think you'll hear from developers saying, well, wait a second. And that's exactly what I think we need, so that the town board is basically forced to start to consider the the policy issues in here and say. Yeah, that's uh, we really need to change that uh and and go through a process. But that was my thinking behind uh behind this. So for example, there was one question as to whether or not um the one acre rule should apply. And I think there are only two or three lots left that would even qualify for the one acre. And um you know, we saw, not an application, but we saw something as a proposal. Where it would be less than an acre and um, you know, there was some uproar over that uh that application, for example. And my interpretation, my suggestion was, okay, clarify it, use the one acre rule and then send it to the town board. And then we all have a process and look at this and say, is that appropriate now? And I saw Greg's uh notes very briefly, is it consistent with the town uh plan, comprehensive plan? Uh I would suggest it's not, but at least you you get it there and you get the conversation going. In the meantime, we hopefully avoid ambiguities and legal disputes and help the building department make determinations. Personally, I think trying to take on the discrepancies and the policies at the same time will do what we usually do and that is nothing. And we'll just stand around and and wait for it to, I'm not saying us, I'm saying the town.
Yeah, I think in I think in the spirit, in the spirit of trying to move things along, if we try to do both at the same time, we'll get bogged down in debates.
That's what I.
Not everybody will, right?
Yes.
And I know there's like three or four or maybe three applicants trying to do something with this. Um if if we were to go to the conservative position on those amb, on those, you know, debatable parts. My question would be, you know, are we, is that is that conservative position, you know, is it three months, is it six months? Is it, could it be, is it years that we're in that conservative position and are we? My concern was if we say, okay, on the ambiguous ones, let's go conservative. That might be enough for some people to say, okay, we solved the problem, we don't have to pay attention to it, and then we never move it, right? And then it just stays there again. And your point about, okay, that's when the developers come in and jump up and down. Maybe they don't come in and jump up and down because they don't wanna, right? We don't know what they're gonna wanna do, and I'm just worried that this still kind of stays where it is, and then a year from now, we're kind of having the same talk again, right? But I agree with you a hundred percent. Trying to do both at the same time is a heavy task.
I, yeah, I I think so. And I think you raise a very good point, and and I guess the so-called conservative view is is basically the conditions that we have now. Which I guess some people are very happy with and others think other things should happen. But at 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 least it clarifies matters and 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 enables without a lot of noise in applications. Trying to be forced into a, you know, a a square peg. Um it it gives us the ability to go about and and getting the information to study. So for, I mean, for example, it was not just the one acre, it was the the ten foot setback, for example. Um you know, I I, you know, we have that downstairs, down in the Hamlet itself, right, downtown on on Greeley. You know, is that appropriate for um?
You have it on King Street, you have it on Greeley, you have it everywhere.
Yep, yep. So, you know, um, you know, what's the appropriate setback? You know, uh do we change that or just leave it as is and say, okay, this is the way it is right now, no harm done here, but can it be done? What what do applicants have in mind? Um you know, I, for example, I mean, Ninety One Bedford turned out to be, I think, a terrific asset uh up there at the top of the hill.
Mm-hmm.
And um, you know, if you ask the applicant, uh the applicant would have preferred to do other things than what he had to do based on our code.
Yeah, that's true.
So we we asked during the course of the, you know, just an informal question to the applicant during the course of that uh application. So um whether that's good or bad, that's a, that's a, that's a, it's a town board, it's a, it's a policy issue.
Do do we know, do we know how?
Just just.
Go ahead.
Just add another little thing, is that um right now the setbacks are eight feet uh off the road. And if you wanna go to ten, um that might increase the amount of work that has to be done after a storm or something like that. You know, I had a tree that was eighty feet high and it was seven and a half feet. So guess who get to get it out of my yard?
Yep.
And I didn't, I wasn't paying any attention to it, so you could say, well, why didn't you take care of it? I couldn't climb that high, so.
Yep. I mean, you know, um so anyway, that that's that's what I wrote, that's what I, that was my position on it. That's what I was trying to um help clarify in terms of how to do it strategically. I think it, I think it should be segmented in that manner, because I I really think, uh and John and I had a conversation about this too at one point, informally. You know, I was all revved up on the policy, and he said, you know, you're gonna bog down if you do the policy at the same time. And it made good sense when I started to think about it, cause that's um, you know, we're just one board and ultimately, this is, the policy is is, you know, the town board's gonna make the policy. We can make the recommendations.
For the, for the.
And sometimes the planning board has gotten ahead and thought that it's making the law, making the policy. And it's it's been uh, it's been tough and it's been inappropriate.
If we divide this into two parts, right, part one is is figuring out the discrepancies and part two is policy. And that's us making, others in the town making recommendations to the board and the board eventually making their final decision, right? But for the first section, where applicants are coming to all the boards and we're finding these these ambiguities, can we?
They're not even getting to you.
They're not even getting to us, but like, I'm getting there. Can they be allowed to get to us and we go through these ambiguities? We take them one at a time and we work through them? No, we can't do that?
You're, go ahead.
No, I mean, so, good evening all, Lino.
Sure, so you, so from from that standpoint, again, I I'm wearing the town attorney hat tonight, but I also wear the other hat too, I'm developer's counsel.
Sure.
So I will tell you, you know, from from the town attorney spot, right, it it's, it'd be nice to, with respect to the policy, that's the town board issue.
Right.
You can make recommendations, but they're ultimately gonna decide how they're gonna want to, you know, in terms of their policy. But I think, to your point, in terms of breaking this up, I think you look at the metrics that you have in front of you right now, okay? So and you have to look at it from the point, well, okay, if an applicant's gonna come in here, how do we, how do we get the applicant here? Let's give the applicant a roadmap, if you will, give him some numbers, whether it's conservative, to your point, Mr. Chairman, or, you know, a little, a little, um, I guess, give him a little bit more. But that's up to you all. Just come up, come up with a recommendation in terms of the metrics, what we think will work. Now, as often happens, sometimes we get great local laws, sometimes not so great. So it just happened recently where I I came to a meeting in another municipality as developer's counsel with this great TOD law, right? Transit oriented development, spent a year, maybe more, working on it. Looked great on paper, right? The numbers seemed to work, but then when you actually put the plan to the actual legislation, it didn't work. It gave me a project that wasn't economically viable. And what I had to do was work with the town board of that to get the law modified, because it just didn't work, again. And that's, your your role is now in the first portion. Let's let's get the metrics and see what works, whether it's conservative or not, that's up to you all, what you think will work. If the applicant's gonna come in, I know we have, you know, an applicant's attorney in the crowd tonight, but if they're gonna come in and say, okay, well, this works, or they're gonna tell you what what doesn't work. Or what what what's gonna be difficult, right? So but I think you're getting ahead of it. I think right now, as you take a look at the local law, the board is just simply asking what what your recommendation is. As to the metrics, you know, the policy they're gonna have to figure out, but at least the metrics right now, cause this law's been on the books since when, nineteen? I mean, it's been on since forever, okay, since seventies, yeah, mid seventies, after the Berdington decision.
Late seventies, right.
So we're well past that. Laws have changed, I mean, affordable housing criteria has changed, definitions have changed. So what we're asking is, you're you're in the trenches every day, you're dealing with applicants. The town board is looking for guidance in terms of, let's let's see what metrics you think would work. Get that back to the board, I'll draft something with Sabrina, and then ultimately, how are you gonna discover if it's gonna work or not? You're gonna get an applicant coming in the door, he's either gonna say, hey, this works, or there's gonna be a public hearing, they'll come out and they'll say, well, you know, based on this local law, we think this is something that's that's ideal. Or we make certain recommendations, and the applicants will have the opportunity to do that when and if this law is actually amended by the town board. They'll get that opportunity. But right now, at its core, at at right at the bottom, at the beginning, we just need to kind of straighten out the ambiguities that are currently in the legislation. That again, it's been on the books since the seventies and hasn't, I think the last amendment was two thousand eleven, I think it was.
Yeah, for the AFFH.
Yeah, yeah.
I I think, Lino, that and uh one of the other issues is, is you look at this, um it's important, the metrics and the policy, they're all, they're all in town.
Yeah.
But one of the issues is to have the information, I don't think it's, it's not rocket science. But for example, if we have a fifty foot setback, how many lots were impacted?
Correct.
What happens if we move to twenty five? And take a look at all those alternatives. That's that's, I think, where the policy comes into play, because I think it's not just something that we do by gut and say, twenty's perfect. Or seventeen's the way to go.
I would argue, that's something in policy, that's actually, you're looking at the the actual, you know, the operation of the law, right?
Exactly.
That's not, that's not a policy thing. Doing a, an analysis of, okay, and we, you know, we do this all the time, what does ten foot setback look like?
Right.
Okay, now what is, what is?
What's it yield?
Right, that's just a a a an exercise that we do when we look at this, right?
Yep.
But again, knowing the applications that come before you, knowing the neighborhood that you know it, you know, there there are some laws, like I just, we just did a complaint in one of the neighborhoods I was doing. And they they re-zoned the downtown to make it conform, because the entire downtown was not conforming. So they brought about eighty-five percent of it into conformance by changing the code and making, you know, and they changed the setbacks, because that particular situation, there there were five foot setbacks in the entire downtown. So they changed the law to reflect that five percent. Did it make it a hundred percent conforming? No, but I think they stuck to eighty-five percent that they got conforming. Things like that, but that's a perfect thing, Mr. Chairman. Ask us, hey, look, Sabrina, what does it look like, or Lino, what does it look like at five, ten, twenty?
Right.
And how many parcels are affected by it?
Right.
But that's the exact, what's it look like at one acre, what's it look like at quarter acre, et cetera. Exactly.
That's the information it seems to me that we have to have uh in order to make the policy recommendations and the metric recommendations to to the um town board. And and my problem, my issue on this is not to do it on the fly with an applicant in an application. You know, with the, you know, the the sword above us, you know, make sure you do it correctly. Uh but do it with the benefit of of some touchstones in the law and that that we've all looked at and got some policy information.
Ideally, that's how you wanna do it. And again, if if, you know, I use Jerry, cause Jerry's here, but if Jerry's client comes in and says, okay. You're gonna come in at the public hearing, whether you do the local law, put in some comments, we may like them, we may not. And then ultimately, once it it's adopted, they're gonna come in and they're gonna apply it. They may have to get a variance from it, maybe not.
Right.
But my point is, you're starting, you're starting it somewhere, right?
Right.
You may have something that's great and it's gonna work and it clears up the ambiguities and that's what you want. But you're not gonna, you're not gonna get there without doing, and yes, all the, you know, rolling up your sleeves and like you said. What what does it look like at this? What does it look like that? What is the neighborhood? What are the setbacks? What are the side yards? And asking those questions, because you're right, that's what makes a good law, right? Knowing the, knowing the area, knowing the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood.
Right.
And that's how you make a good zoning law, particularly on this one where it's been on the books for so long and it hasn't been changed for for many years.
Right, and I think one of the other issues I've raised was that whether or not it should also be two different standards. Um I I personally just don't think that, you know, uh King Street has the same capacity for development that downtown the Hamlet Greeley has. Down there, where it's flat and it it works. The hill is a real constraint, it seems to me, for commercial development. And so what do we wanna do with that? Do we have different standards? Um uh again, we we heard from applicants when we talked to them, when we're going through the application. There are certain rules and regulations in our current code that they found to be really challenges. And they were, they were economic challenges, they were challenges architecturally, there were challenges for outcomes, you know, and and um do we need to change those? Should we change those?
Yeah. It's difficult to build in the downtown with the current rules and regulations.
Yes, yeah.
And I think it would also make, well, I guess, I don't know if it's a plus or minus, the fact that there's so many individual property owners in the downtown. And you have so many little pieces of property, you know, it 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 makes it difficult to do anything of scale. And I find it, I I also see it difficult for somebody to come in, you know, developer, big trucks, buying thirty, you know. Buying twenty pieces of property from twenty different individual property owners to consolidate something big enough. You know, I just, I just don't see it happening, right? It's it's a toughie. Um and so it's it's.
Because I shouldn't tell you that I'm on a contract with sixteen different residential owners in Loudoun County.
Yeah, but that's Loudoun County, that's not here.
I know.
With lots of people with five thousand and seven thousand square foot parcels, right? Which are, you cannot do anything with in the covered zone.
Right, I drove around this, cause quite, I mean, I I drove around today and saw what's there. And like, for instance, playing on the road that goes down to the post office, but like on the right side. Flat, you know, someone, there's, it's multi-level, the garage is is basically at the bottom of the hill as it's going up, and then there's a, the second floor is level with. The with the road, hot, you know, as you get further up, so basically if you're driving to your garage, kind of thing. And I was just looking, there's so much, if someone were to consolidate these, putting my developer hat on, there's more that could be done in a consolidation.
Yes. Cut it out.
And putting that forward, like, is there something where the, where there's an incentive to aggregate them to make something that's that's better, but has then more open space?
Right, where you could get six.
Because if you further you go down, you can add another floor without, you know. It's, it's very complex.
Yeah, it is very complex and and we actually, you know, got our hand slapped, because we did a little bit of stuff about North Greeley.
So where do. So.
Got ahead of folks, so I, you know, you've gotta be careful.
So if, so Sabrina started with a matrix, right? She gave us a a list on that last page eight with her ideas. Uh do we, since we're. It, do we, since we're not gonna be trying to figure out the, what do what do we do next? Well, I'm asking you guys.
I I actually took her matrix, cause I thought it was really useful.
I took it too.
And looked at it and said, okay, well then, just, you know, flop, we go this way, go this way, on this, and this, and then at least you have the rule in the law and we get rid of the ambiguity. And now, you know, we're we're set and whatever comes in is gonna be compliant with whatever, you know, the town board takes is. I don't, does that require legislation, even the clearing up the ambiguity or?
It would require an amendment to the code, because certain things are.
Okay. So the town board would have to take even that action. Um and and I would suggest that, again, segmented, segmenting will make it easier just to get the town board to take some action on that. And then they can kind of relax and work on the policy issues as as we feed them information on on policy changes based on metrics and information.
So is our first step to take the the ten points that Sabrina li- outlined and try to find common ground to make recommendations to the town board, so we could get things going?
I would. Start there. That's probably the best thing to do, is look at those and see where you kind of fly.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know some of you have provided some comments, which is great. I've read yours with the chairman, I know, I think, Jeff, I saw yours and and you agreed. So, you know, we're gonna take those and kind of put them together and and get that back to the town board. But yeah, that's a great place to start. And and, you know, you you'll have your comments and we'll put it together and then we'll we'll ask the board, what do they wanna do?
So let's say the chairman and I are this far apart.
Then that's the town board's gonna make that call, cause that's a policy decision.
So so, so but do we, do we try to compromise first, or do we just let the board know that we're far apart and they figure it out?
That's up to you. If you, if you're so, that's gonna be up to you. If you're so far apart.
That's up to us, okay.
Up to you to come to your senses.
That's. If you guys can't find it out and figure it out.
I think I'm the deciding vote.
I mean, Jeff, you should be in the middle of that, and you know.
I'm gonna propose three point O FAR in every lot.
So no, I, but I think, you know, um I I think it's important not to necessarily have one unified you know, voice going to the town board. Let them hear all these different voices. Um you know, we've done that in the past. I mean, we we have done it, we've done this a couple of times when we had other studies. And there was a dissenting person who, you know, I encouraged to write a very full dissent and send it into the town board. So that's always, it's up to the town board to make that decision. So I think to the extent that we can give them more information and even different perspectives, we're we're providing a good service.
Works for me.
So I think what would be helpful is, I guess, um you, Jeff and I have made some comments. And if if you folks can, you know, put together or at least look at these as well, and then if you, you know, if something that makes.
And I wanna read yours, I haven't had a chance to read yours or Jeff's.
Yeah, if it's something you really don't like, that's fine too, but again, submit them to Sabrina so that she can get these in and they can start to get this to the town board. And the town board may say, all six of you people are nuts. That's fine. Um.
You're a point man.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly, and we're not going anywhere. That's why we get the big bucks.
Or we may say, hey, some good ideas here.
Yeah, exactly, 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 yeah. So and I, and I think actually, if you folks on the board, I think they'll take the uh takes on the comments very seriously and 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 support them. So we shall see. So that that would be my recommended action step, that we're going into August, so it's kind of a dead time, it's not exactly what you wanna be reading on the beach. You know, just comments. So but we really should schedule a conversation for the September meeting, you know, put it on the agenda. But again, take a look at what you have before us and then if you wanna change it, amend it. Stuart, Jennifer, if you wanna add something, please do. Um I think it would be terribly helpful. Thank you very much.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Sounds like a good plan to me.
Okay.
We're moving forward.
Yes, exactly. I mean, I think it's 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 a good step. I think it's a good step.
Hey, do we not have a meeting on September second?
We do not.
Okay. I can't count to this one after Labor Day, the day after, it's just too much, too rugged. And Labor Day is so early this year.
It is early, right?
Ah, first day, September one.
It's early.
Cuts off summer. Anyway, is there a motion to close the, close the here, did, um.
Agreed.
Did you wanna talk?
Well, I I just, did you, I wanna make sure that you have the letter that our firm submitted.
Do you wanna come up?
From last time?
Yeah, have it, have it, have it, make it good.
Yeah, 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 I got it right here.
Yeah.
Make sure that you have it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just approved you, it's right there.
Oh, terrific. And I, and just, you know, just to suggest that, um, to remember that where these conflicts come in, in part, is that you have an overlay district that's being incorporated into an underlying district. So for example, the the fifty foot setback, if you're developing a commercial building in in the BR retail district, you have a ten foot setback. If you're doing multifamily, you have a fifty foot setback.
Right.
Right? And and what is the logic of that? And where is the incentive to a developer to develop the multifamily when in fact, if they did retail on the ground floor and apartments above, they would have a ten, a ten foot.
And parking.
And the fifty foot setback probably doesn't let you build in the downtown, because
It's not.
No.
there's not that many sites deep enough that it'll let you do that.
Correct.
Correct.
And the acreage is the same.
Right, yeah.
Of course, yes.
And yet, the goal was to, and I understand this starts to creep into policy, but the goal was to encourage alternate forms of housing
Mm-hmm.
in the downtown.
Yeah.
So, great, I just wanna make sure that you had that.
Great.
Hey, thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to uh close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.